Nancy, mind if I say she's running for school board against Kylene Fisher. And she's going to speak to us about economic development. She grew up in South Bend, Indiana. She's one of the eight children. She's married to Chris.
That's correct.
For thirty-two years. She has three stepchildren, three grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. She went to Indiana State University, graduated with a BS and MS in education, and worked on a finance degree at Harley Dickinson in Teaneck, New Jersey.
New Jersey.
Okay. Her experience is she's taught remedial reading at O.P.L. Elementary in Orlando, ABC record and tape sales in New Jersey, Darden Restaurants where after she was a financial analyst for them. Worked for Tupperware, corporate planning and budget analyst. Started her own business in nineteen ninety-four. She owns Striking Effects Promotions, still in operation on door. I got my company shirts for you guys.
There's some t-shirts here.
Yes.
It's fun.
Nice to meet you, Archon. She's the executive director of the Eustace Chamber of Commerce. And she's the director of Business Incubator Programs at Lake Sumter.
Good place.
And without further ado, I'll bring up Nancy.
Thank you. It was nice to see the t-shirt that you have on. And I want to thank you all very much for participating in George Fest. We have an embroidered shirt back there. For the last four years, I was the organizer of the George Fest celebration through my position at Eustace Chamber of Commerce. So I thank you for all that you have done in the last few years, and thank you again for participating this year. I wanted to go through my resume, and then I'm going to talk about some of the things I've done because everything that I've done to this point is sort of the foundation for where I'm going and why I'd like to be part of the school board. Working for corporations, being in charge of budgets, preparing budgets, doing analysis of actual to budget, reporting numbers to whether it be General Mills or Kraftwood, Kraft on Tupperware. I've learned a lot about accountability, and a lot about accuracy, and a lot about research. And I've been able to use those skills in developing the company that I have. Striking Effects Promotions will be twenty years old this November. I started it from scratch. We had no customers. We opened up the door, and we started from scratch. So we really had to learn how to train our employees, how to hold them accountable, how to have standards for performance, how to have a good product and good customer service. And that is really what built our business to what it is today. Twenty years of working on that and participating in the community has taught us a lot about being involved and making a difference, and being part of the solution as opposed to part of the problem. So as the owner and operator of Striking Effects Promotions, we participated with the Eustace Chamber of Commerce for many years. I was president of the board in two thousand and five. And then in two thousand and nine, the board directors decided to make a change in their executive director. And so I went over there and took over that position to turn the chamber around. The chamber was down to very little money, and a lot of issues with dissatisfaction with our members, and little participation in our events. And so I was able to leave Striking Effects and go to the chamber and take that job over. My husband still runs Striking Effects. I still help with the accounting. And we multitask. He's on the city commission in Eustace. We have business. We do the chamber, and now I have a new position. But in my position at Eustace Chamber of Commerce, I was able to turn that chamber around by adding great customer service, by implementing policies and procedures that were applicable to everyone, and to try to make it an organization that was beneficial to the businesses in our community. Because that's what a Chamber of Commerce is, is an organization for businesses. So we worked on that chamber from two thousand and nine until just this last year. Actually, during that process, we decided that the chamber building was our only asset that we could leverage. Money was getting very tight. Cash flow was very tight. So we took a look at the building and said, if we were to sell this building and buy another building and partner with the county on a business opportunity center, how could we now grow with the chamber? How could we establish a revenue stream going forward and do something for the community? So we made a pitch to the city. We were able to sell the chamber building. And we moved to the Wells Fargo Financial Services Building on Nineteen. And we had some help from Walter here. He was, he did the appraisal on the old chamber building. So we were able to make our pitch to our city. The city bought the old chamber building. And then the art museum, the Eustace Art Museum moved in there. They have a wonderful facility now. And we were able to move into this building on Nineteen, into the Wells Fargo Financial Services Building. We now have a building that is a half million dollars of value. We have a mortgage of two forty. And we have a revenue stream because we have ten offices in which we can now rent going forward. But in the meantime, we have a business opportunity center housed in that facility. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the business opportunity centers, but as of June, I think probably most of you know Russ Sloan. Russ Sloan retired in April, and I took over his position as a director of Business Incubator Programs at the college. The business opportunity centers are an economic development initiative by the county to help existing businesses, startup businesses, and businesses that might have been in existence for a while but want to grow and are not really sure how to do that. So the Business Opportunity Center has an umbrella program in which we offer training, consulting, and incubation. The traditional incubation concept is where a startup business would come in and be there for two, three years. We give them onsite mentoring. We help them with their business plan. We give them benchmarks to achieve, milestones in their business plan. We help them with marketing, and we help them find resources. And the goal is to help them develop the business so that they are ready to move out into their area and hire employees. Our county is a little bit different in the fact that we have many businesses that are public service businesses. They are the individuals and businesses that work in the field every day, whether it is lawn care and tree cutting and landscaping to cleaning services for commercial and residential. We also have a lot of, although it's not new construction, we still have a lot of folks in construction in repairs, maintenance, renovations, and those types of things. These are people who have now gone out, started a business because they lost their jobs. They lost where they were working before, so they've started their own businesses. And they are, they are in dire need of help in the business plan area, marketing strategies. And although they don't really need an incubator office, they don't really need to come in and be in a static office every day, they're working very hard in the field. But most don't know how to advertise their business. And if they're of an age of most of us in this room, social media is a real challenge, knowing how to effectively use Facebook and Twitter and all those types of things to advertise their business. So we at the Business Opportunity Center are offering those services and that type of training to actually take these businesses and grow them so that they can be successful in the county. Now, we've been doing this for the last couple of years. Oh, actually, I've been doing this since June, but the Business Opportunity Center has been in place since a year ago, September. At that time, we actually had a lot of the cities participate in funding that program and understanding where we were trying to go with economic development in the county. In the last four to five weeks, Robert Chandler, who is the director of Economic Development and Tourism with the county, including his staff and myself, we have visited every city commission and every chamber roundtable in the county. And we have gone to them and said, this is what the Business Opportunity Center is doing. This is how we're trying to help businesses. What would you like for us to do as a city or as your chamber? How can we help you in economic development? We went through LDRs, land development regulations. We've gone through tree ordinances. We've gone through site ordinances. We've gone through how difficult it is to get a new business license. And that's usually the first forty-five minutes of the conversation. And then, without exception, twenty minutes after that part of the conversation, someone raises their hand and says, you know, you can fix all of those things, but until you fix education in Lake County, none of those initiatives will work. And so keeping that in mind, I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking, I'm working really hard for these businesses. I know how difficult it is, but I'm defined the correct, or skilled workforce. I'm working at the college, and I understand what we're trying to do there with our certification programs. I understand what's going on at Lake Tech. And I have a unique resume that I bring to the table in that I've been in education, and I've been in business. And really, business, education is economic development. And we need to get back to understanding the business of education. And that's really why I think I have something to bring to the party. I believe that our businesses need workforce. We need a skilled workforce. If we can get a skilled workforce, they can get jobs, and they have buying power. Then they go to the businesses that exist, and our businesses sell more products and services that are more profitable. And when demand increases, we get more businesses. But until we fix the workforce, none of that vicious circle takes place. So that is really why I decided to go ahead and be part of the campaign for running for school board. I think that there are a lot of initiatives that we can take a look at. At this point, I'd really like to tell you what I think. My three things are, and because it's a small group, I'd really like to kind of entertain questions and have a conversation between us. I know these words have been used before, so I'm really glad that I have them already written down. First thing, accountability. No matter what you do, no matter where you were, you have to be accountable for what you do. You have to take responsibility, and you have to do the job that you've been given. If you are in charge of a business, if you're in charge of an organization, whatever happens underneath you, you're accountable for. Now, that means that you're responsible for training. And if you delegate, you are still in the end accountable for what takes place. So I believe that accountability is probably number one. Now, you always have to get to the source of the problem. So it isn't always up here, but up here is always where it stops. But accountability is number one. Until we can fix that, we don't know how to get to the root of the problem. So accountability. Standards of performance. Standards of performance for our teachers, our principals, and our administrative staff. As in any business, we need to make sure that we train our staff properly, that we review them properly, and we give them the opportunity to approve if they're failing. But we still have to hold them accountable, but we are, we are responsible for making sure that they get the proper training they need to do the job. But we still need to hold people accountable to standards. I don't believe in the Common Core standards. I don't think they're core. I don't believe that they, I don't believe that they further our mission. I don't believe they help the teachers, and I don't believe they help our students. But I do believe in standards. I do believe that our first graders need to pass a standard of achievement to go to second grade. Our second graders, second graders need to achieve before they go to third grade. Because every time we pass them on, we make it more difficult for our teachers to do the job. If you've ever been in the classroom, I've been trying to do some work in the classroom through what I'm doing now. But think of yourself as a teacher in third grade, and you have students reading below a level. You have students who can't speak English. You have students that are on average, and you have students that are above average. As one individual, it is entirely impossible to meet the needs of all four of those level of achievements. And yet, our teachers are fearful of their jobs because they can't teach those children and get them to the level where they need to be. And we've created that problem by not having standards, by not making sure that our children know, have the achievement level they need to go to the next grade. So standards are important, and I believe in those, just not the Common Core ones. Financial responsibility, big, big, big issue. In my philosophy, the mission for education should be to provide the best education possible that we can afford. With that mission in mind and that statement, every time an issue comes up for financial decisions, you have to say, if we decide to do this, does it enhance? Does it further that mission? If it doesn't, it falls lower in the priority. I'll just give a really simple answer because I'm not there to know all the numbers. But if you were faced with the issue of, well, we have so much money. Are we going to pay for busing? Or are we going to pay for new white fleet? That's a pretty simple answer, because the busing gets our children to school. The white fleet, we might have to look at differently. But you have to narrow everything down in a financial responsibility to the mission statement. Does it enhance? Does it further that mission statement? Too many times, I believe that financial decisions are based on an emotional response, not, not a business response. We need educators, and we need people that are passionate about education, that love our children. And yes, we want them in the classroom. But when you're sitting on a board and making decisions, you have to look at things in an objective fashion and understand, if you make this decision, what is the next step, the next step, and the next step? So understanding the financial responsibility and keeping it aligned with your mission statement makes those decisions a little bit easier and a little bit more objective. So yes, financial responsibility. Commitment. Commitment to our teachers and our students. I would like to see us create a classroom environment that is conducive for our teachers to teach and our students to learn. Have you ever, at Christmas time, seen a five-year-old that wasn't excited to open up that Christmas present and learn how to use that remote control car? Or put those Legos together? Or do something they didn't know anything about? They're so excited, they can't hardly do it. But get them to school, and in three or four years, they're bored. They don't know what to do, and they don't want to be there. Whether it's behind, they're behind, and they can't do the work. They don't want to go to school anymore. There's no passion for learning. As a teacher, when I graduated from college with a master's degree, I couldn't wait to get my first teaching job. Could not wait to get in that classroom and get started. And two years after I was there, my principal was, it just shut me down. I couldn't, I couldn't be creative. I couldn't do things. When you're teaching remedial reading to sixth graders, there are no books for sixth graders to read that are reading on a seventh grade level. I wrote my books for my sixth graders to read. I tried to come up with creative ways for things to be done. We actually, we read stone soup, if you're familiar with stone soup. We read stone soup. And we actually had, we brought things in. I worked at my guidance counselor school. We had crop pop. We made stone soup. We invited the principal to come. It's too busy, couldn't manage. So my thought is that our teachers want to teach, but they lose the zeal. They lose the passion and the edge because they're not being supported. And we're putting them in such an environment that it's hard to be there. It's interesting. Common Core is supposed to support creativity and cognitive thought. And our, and our teachers are structured in that they can't, they can't respond to that. You know, as I sit here, I see Lou is shaking her head, someone else. I'm responding to what you're doing. The teacher in the classroom responds to students that are learning and not learning, and they have to adjust as they go along. If I were speaking to you or getting all this, I have to change my technique. I have to change my method, my method of delivery. But we have five things on the board that says you have to cover all these things in this day, and then tomorrow, and then another five things. It stifles the creativity of the teacher, and there's no way for them to accomplish what they need to accomplish to teach our children. So we have to have a commitment to our teachers and our students to create an atmosphere where they can teach, and where our students can learn. Now, there's a lot of things that go into that. And I applaud Patricia Sullivan for being our advocate for the state and for our, you know, federal Common Core issues. And we have some other organizations. But as a school board, and we all know this, we're very, we feel out of control right now because we can't control our state. We can't control our federal government. We're living with all these regulations, and we feel very much out of control. And I believe that there are a lot of things on a day-to-day basis that as a school board member, we can affect policy on things we can control today that are ours to control. We can change the atmosphere in the classroom. We can change how we deliver the message. But we have to work towards that because we have a commitment to our teachers and our students to make that happen. So I believe in accountability, financial responsibility, and a commitment to our teachers to make those things happen. In essence, what I believe is that the school board needs to understand, and I think this is where we have changed. It's one thing to identify that we have problems. It's even another thing to identify that we have problems with English second language students or below average students. But if you have never been in a position to actually structure change, implement change, and manage it, you don't know how. You have to come from some background where you can look at it, implement a process and a milestone by which you can measure those changes, and you have to know to implement, how to implement them. I don't think many of our school board members know how to do that. You've had to have managed, when you own your own business, and I can tell you, in the last five to six years, it's been very difficult to manage your business. How do you change your customer service? How do you adjust your product? How do you, how do you do your pricing? How do you market? Those are really, really good experiences to understand how to implement change. And so I believe that I have the experience to do that. I know that some of the other issues that are facing us, Common Core, we talked a little bit about. I know there are issues on uniform dress, bring your own device. This is how I look at this. It would be wonderful if every student had their own device. It would be great. But we don't have that, we don't have the money to do that. We have, we have a couple elementary schools that are A schools that don't have devices. It's, it would be important to understand best practices. I want to move towards devices, but I think if we understand what best practices are, we can still do something today until we can afford to get all those devices or improve the system to get them. Uniform dress. I think that the process of education is to train our students to be prepared to go into the real world, to work. If uniform dress is part of that toolbox, then that's a really good thing. It is a tool to teach our students that you don't get to do what you want to every day. In the real world, we have to, we have to dress appropriately. We have to act appropriately. Yesterday, I did drop readiness at Minneola High School. We had some kids in the class with earrings and tats and a bunch of other things. So we talked about their freedom to be who they want to be, to express their opinion and who are they and what, what can they do. And we talked about the fact that in your own life, in your own time, you can dress the way you want to, and you can have your tats and your earrings. But when you work for a business, there are expectations of behavior, expectations of dress. In our business, in my embroidery department, I had a forty-year-old and a twenty-year-old. They had nothing, nothing in common. And the forty-year-old was really slow and stuck in her ways. And the twenty-year-old came to me and said, I'm not talking to her. I don't like her. I'm not working with her, and I don't talk with her. And that's my right. I said, it is your right. It's your right to do that when you want to, but it is my right to say that if you can't get the job done, then you don't work here anymore. So we have to prepare our students to know when you get to the real world, there are expectations, and you don't get to do everything you want to every day. And those years in school are the way we prepare them to move forward. So if uniform dress is one of those ways in which we prepare them to go out in the world and know how to behave, that's a good tool. But I believe, well, we just talk about uniforms. It kind of turns people off. If you can change their mindset to, as this is a tool to be prepared to go out in the future, it's a different, it's a different attitude. So those are some of the things that I believe. A couple other things, just perception is reality. We look at the grades in the paper, and we see double As, double Bs, double Cs, and to the outside world, that is exactly what it is. There's a very convoluted method in which grades for schools are calculated. I've been trying to understand it, and I'm still working on it. Yes, we have a lot of things to improve upon in our schools. But we have a lot of great things that we need to tell people about, and we need you to help us do that. Our career academies that we have in our high schools are the best in the state. The best in the state, and they're getting better. We have excellent music programs in our schools. In the East Ridge School, they have an excellent DECA program where their students prepare and competed in the district competition for innovation and marketing. And they placed first, and they're going to the state, state competition. My point here is that we have a lot of good things happening. We need to be aware that a lot of good things are happening so that we can tell people, yes, we're working on this. We're going to make this better. But we do have these things that are really good, and we invite you to participate. So perception is reality. We can give a good message, we're going to get people to at least believe that we are working on it, and we know that we have a problem. That's how I think that you could be part of the solution. Now, I'd like to open up and answer any questions you might have, because I know I've only top touched on a few things, so please feel free to ask any questions you might have. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I was in aerospace a long time, and the last third of my career is real popular. You ask us to answer questions. Who is my customer? In your case, who, if you run a school board, who would you see as your customer or customers? And if you would like to, could you compare and contrast that to maybe what the existing school board might perceive as different that you might change?
Our customers are our students, and our product is our education. I think that our current school board loses track of the student as the customer, and we're worried about getting votes, and we're worried about someone, you know, the last person that complained to us about this or that. We're worried, we're worried about unions and yard work and lawn work and stuff like that. You know, my theory is if you stand, stand behind your mission statement, you're able to discern who your customer is, what your product is, and where you're going. But I think we get lost in, who am I going to get a vote from? Who am I going to upset? Who am I going to, you know? I think you have to keep your mission and your direction straight. Now, I believe you have to listen. I think you have to be open-minded, because, you know, there are things we don't know. And I'd be the first, if I made a decision on something, and there were pieces of information that I didn't have, I would, I would at least listen to those pieces of information because we're not perfect. And it's wrong to never change your opinion on something once you've given facts. But if you have a direction and a mission, you need to stick to that. And I believe that our customers are our students, and our product is education.
I might add, and this is not a personal concern, you're also incorporating the local businesses indirectly as a customer, and that's not necessarily bad, but that's, that's what I was kind of, what do you want to advertise that or not?
No, no, no. I, I would like to, because I believe that's a big thing in my job and in my, one of the things I've been trying to do in the last six months is create a collaborative effort between all the organizations and entities in this county that are trying to do something. I think you mentioned earlier about there are a lot of people working on everything. You're trying to get everyone together to move together. The water authority. There are all these different agencies working on water authority. It'd be nice to get everyone on one page, go to one meeting, have one direction, or at least understand one message. When I started the job, Lake County had one definition and one website for business incubator. The SBDC had another definition, and the college had another definition, and the words are not the same. So any person that got on one of those websites got one message and got one answer to a question, and they got a completely different one than the next person. So the first thing I tried to do was get all three of us on the same page. Now, we all have the same website. We all have the same SMS, the same words. So now, I find out as I'm working with the schools, how important it is to understand what's happening in Lake County schools, and how they feed into Lake Tech, and how they feed into Lake Sumter, and how those folks go into our business world. Our Lake, Lake County schools with our career academies, they are looking for business advisors. They are really looking for those of us in the business community that can come in and work with the students and say, this is the current information. This is the current software. This is the current equipment. This is my passion. This is how you can get into this field. But they are looking for us as business people to give them direction. They are also asking for us as business individuals to come and speak to them, speak to their classes, inspire them, answer their questions, and keep them in school. Talk to them about opportunities. So the business world is a very integral part of fixing education. And I believe that they want us to do that. I hope that answers your question. Stuart?
Yes, this is just a minor thing, Nancy. But you have three ladies here who don't know what white fleet is.
Oh, I'm really sorry. You know, you start getting in that jargon, and off you go. White fleet would be all of the maintenance vehicles that go around and dry hair and dry hair and do this. You know, people, you know, you might go fix the plumbing and this or whatever. But, but, you know, sometimes you, I'm sure, wouldn't everybody here like to have a new car? That'd be really nice. But I can't afford a new car, so I gotta fix the old car. You know, so sometimes it's nice to have everything, but you have a budget, and you can't afford it. So when you're working within a set budget, this is the mission. Does it advance the mission? If not, it's low on the priority list. That's what I'm, what, thank you. Sure. Yes, sir?
I have a couple of questions. One, with your relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, I'm deeply concerned that the U.S. Chamber has taken such a prominent role in promoting amnesty, as you probably noted prior to your appearance in United, depending on that subject. How do the local and regional and state chambers interact with the U.S. Chamber? Are they, is it like the local parties where the, go ahead?
Very little. In the four years that I was at the Eustace Chamber, we participated not at all with the federal Chamber of Commerce. We are so concentrated on where we are right now, and because we have a wide base of members, and that membership fee is to benefit the members, there are a lot of members who don't believe in those missions, you know, of other chambers of commerce. And so we try to stick within the mission that fits our chamber and our local communities. Most of the chambers in Lake County do not support the higher mission and issues of those things.
In terms of the Common Core, you know, this is enormously problematic because of the, where we are in the, on the timeline. And, you know, Florida's already signed up for it. You know, it's all about money, federal dollars. You know, now that we're getting a glimpse of what it really entails, you know, you're seeing a building backlash against it. You know, you spoke to that particular issue. What I've seen in, in the use coverage in the last 24 hours is a number of states are really changing the name in the state laws to camouflage the Common Core, you know, the Florida, you know, dynamic standards for schools or, you know, whatever, no, no place really goes to sign it, but with no real meaning in terms of, you know, Common Core to me is, is an enormous threat. What are you going to do on the school board in order to crystallize that issue for the school board, you know, knowing, you know, based on your experience, that the unions see as, as a money trough and anything that's money they're going to run to, whether it's in the best interest of their, of their constituency or not? The teachers I've spoken to are very concerned about it.
Absolutely.
And which seems, you know, counterintuitive that the unions are supporting it.
Yeah, well, the teachers are the ones implementing it, so, you know, that's why they're, they're having a relationship.
What are you going to do on the school board in order to help crystallize that issue here locally and in order to be able to have that voice heard at the legislative delegation and then up until the Hasty and hopefully up in Wayne?
I believe that we have to give the advocates like Patricia Sullivan the fodder to go ahead and do what they need to do. My philosophy on this is working with teachers. I'm going to step back just one, one instance for what we did in our business and how it's working and how I think this might transition. So, having a production company that does embroidery, screen printing, engraving, and you have salespeople and you have production people, and if you have a business, you probably know that sales and production never see things eye to eye. I mean, the production people say the sale bill or it wasn't written right and the sales people say the production people can't read and so you have all these issues on how to get to quality, how to get to the finished product that is the customer service that you, that your customers deserve and the product, the quality of the product that they deserve. So, we sent all of our employees down and we said, "Okay, what are the top 10 things that lead to a successful job? What are the things we need to follow to make sure that when we start a job, we finish it correctly?" Our employees put down 10 steps and we had these posters on in our building, you know, "Read the order, second person reads the word." Anyhow, 10 steps. Every time an order goes wrong, one of those steps was not followed. And the employees put it together so they know that they were responsible and accountable for the issue, for what went wrong. My point here is that when you work with the people who are doing the job, they have the best input back to you. And a lot of times, they have the best solutions for you. So, working with teachers that are successful and best practice teachers and principals who can come back to you and say, "This is what works. This doesn't work. This does not work. This is where we need to go." Those are the people that give us the hands-on, boots-on-the-ground answers to give to Patricia Sullivan to say, "This doesn't work. This is where we need to go." And I believe that's, that's what the school board has to do is get those teachers, those people, boots on the ground, to give that information back. Because, you know, school board can't go every day in the state. We have to work towards giving them the information and we have to be responsible for that. We have to be working on policies and procedures day-to-day that happen, but we have to really go to the people that can help us. And I believe the teachers are the ones that really know.
Amen.
I hope that answers, or if you want some more, if that doesn't?
Well, no, no, I, I understand that, but, you know, the fact of the matter is that you, if you're dependent upon one person and, you know, I'm certainly Patricia as a high caliber individual, who did does a, a type of job.
I guess maybe I use Patricia as an example, but there are other organizations within the county that are advocates.
But, but sometimes, you, you've got to have, have volume to have impact in, in order to, to really get your person's attention because you fade into their memory amongst a cluster of a handful of people that came in and spoke to you on that issue as opposed to several hundred. And, and to me, that's going to be getting the parents and getting the teachers to, to push aside aggressively if necessary, the teachers' union. And make it abundantly clear that the speaker, that the teachers' union does not speak for the teachers on this particular issue and that they see Common Core as being a threat to the delivery of, of good education to the students. There are a multitude of other issues that need to be addressed in our classrooms. We don't need to complicate it by a Common Core.
No, I wholeheartedly agree. Nikki?
I can say it over the years, I thought, I don't think any school board ever really listens or asks teachers what they thought and ever went with anything we thought. If the school board could, could bond with teachers in some way, but making them know that they are there for them, it would cut the power of the union greatly. We didn't, we didn't need the union as long as I, or I supported it. I put more money in there than I ever thought when I look back, but I did it because at the time I started here, we had problems. So, I just talked and joined in and, but I really never saw anything in the county that came good from the union. And my friends who are still supporting would kill me if they heard me say it, but I never, I never, I didn't see anything that came to the county that was good. And I always felt that if teachers would have their own union in the county, I mean, just have a speaker to go to talk to the school board, they could have done so much more, but if the power of a union could be cut, and it would be if we had a good school board that listened to the teachers.
You're going to have to change the culture, you're going to have to change the attitude on people on the school board to do that.
That's true, but you can do it.
I think it can. Dan, would they give you a question?
Uh, well, you clarified, I mean, I, you talking about talking to Patricia Sullivan, I didn't quite get why talk to her, but she is a-
Well, she's our advocate, isn't she? At the State Representative-
For the REC.
For the Republican.
Yeah.
But she, she's, you mean?
She's not on the board or anything.
No, but isn't she our advocate against Common Core? I thought that was the case.
She's a Republican Party in Lake County, the State Committee won.
Mm-hmm. But she has been doing-
She has.
Many of us, many of us have voted against stop Common Core.
Right, and I think I just used Patricia as an example of an advocate. And, and we need all of the advocates and organizations that are willing to do that. And as a school board, we need to come up with the information to support why we are against it with concrete examples and suggestions on where we want to go. But, you know, as a school board, we're going to have to actually pay attention on a day-to-day basis as well on the things we can change today to make it better tomorrow, working at it from two different ends, from the top end and from the bottom. Because if we wait till it's fixed at the top, we're going to have another couple of years go by. So, we have to, we can work on today to make it better.
Nancy, that brings up something. What I've observed in the, the Lake County school board is there's a few of the members that whatever the issue is, they take it to the lowest common denominator, you know, and they always go to the lower, the, the, the students that maybe don't have enough money, the, the, all of the social programs, social safety net program, and they bring everything down to that level. And I, you know, and I consider that to be one of the, the biggest problems.
It is, it is an issue. We are, we are dumbing down our education to the, the lowest common denominator. And unfortunately, we cause some of that by passing students on to the next grade that aren't ready to go. The other issue is a social issue and that is a very difficult one. You know, those students that do well have parents that work with them. They have a family that supports them. I will tell you that I was, I, I spoke to an Abbott, an Abbott class in seventh grade over at Eustis Middle School. And I spoke to the students and I was there to kind of talk to them about expectations. I'm the oldest in my family. I was the first to go to college. So, I was talking about it, doesn't matter how many kids are in your family, doesn't matter, you know, how much money you have. If you are, if you want to go and you work hard, you can go. And so, I was trying to help them set expectations and I was trying to get them to understand who they were today. So, I gave them a list of 50 words. I said, "I want you to pick five words to describe who you were today in seventh grade and then I'm going to ask you why you picked those words." So, we went through this and I'm really glad that every class has one of these, but, you know, "Pick me, pick me." "I'm yours because I like to entertain class." You know, that's always good, kind of gets things going. And so, we went around the room. And so, I have a young African-American woman in the class and I said, "What is your word? She's self-motivated. Hmm, that's a pretty good word. Why did you pick that?" She says, "Because no one in my family cares what my grades are or what I do. If I want to be something, I have to do it myself." That is a very humbling moment if you stood in the classroom and you heard students say that to you. How to fix that, I don't know. I know that if we participate as best we can in our communities and we do the things we can through mentoring or participating in our churches and things that will help support the family unit, it is a big deal in Lake County. It's a huge deal where students go home and they don't have help. Immigration, there's another issue. I'm trying to understand how to address English as a second language in school. And so, I spoke to Emily Lee, who is the director of the Basap New Neighborhood Council in Eustis, because I know that we have some Hispanic families in our community. And so, I said to Emily, "How, how can we work with these families so that when the kids, they go to school and they have to learn English or speak English and then they go home and their parents don't speak English, don't speak Spanish?" I said, "How can we teach those parents English?" She says, "They will not leave their homes because they're undocumented and they're afraid to be deported." So, now we have students in school who can't speak English and they go home and speak Spanish and their parents can't help them with their homework because they're afraid of being deported. So, immigration is affecting our schools as well. You know, how do you address, how do you address the English language in school because kids are hard to warn you? That's a big issue. How does a teacher teach someone who can't speak English? These are a lot of complex problems.
Was that Rosetta Stone?
I, I do believe in some cases Rosetta Stone is being used, but-
It is.
Yes, ma'am.
You touched on it a little bit about businesses, you know, getting involved, mentoring and things like that. Have none of you are still on with this?
Me too, I'm here with you.
We had, you know, people come in to teach us, you know, talk to us about, you know, going on interviews. I mean, there was, you know, we, we could go for a couple of weeks after school and work at the hospital and things like that. And I, I, when my daughter went to school, there was nothing like that in her school. And I think that's a, a great loss and I, and I, and I think the thing that disturbs me the most is not so much businesses because sadly liability has-
It is a huge issue, I know. I have the same issue in my business.
It can stifle things so much, but I often wonder why we can't get some of our elected officials who, you know, want to be, you know, public servants, why they can't go to the schools and do some of that. You know, it's, it's their job. As a public servant, you serve the public, not just sit in your office all day and go, oh, bye-bye, out and go. And come and explain to them the different positions in their, you know, what's the clerk's office, the different positions that are available, what the child needs to do to get there, you know, if there's a degree that's needed.
And to your point, I, exactly why we're trying to encourage people to do that.
How, how aggressive can the school board be to try to, to try to get this?
It's a collaborative effort that is underway right now. In fact, today, I just met with Carmen Cullen at the Education Foundation and they actually are working on a database and a program for business liaison work. And they're actually going to have on their website, there'll be a volunteer page where people can volunteer or go in and see where schools have actually posted that they need a speaker in marketing or they get a speaker to talk about nursing or something like that. So, as a business, you could go in and find out where a school needs help or you could volunteer to speak. We are working with the Education Foundation and they are going to be working with Bob Carlisle, who works for Micky Teach Up in Lake County Schools. So, the collaborative effort of getting a database for speakers, a database for need and matching those, because I know, I know what you're saying. As a business right now, we have so few employees, we have so much to do that sometimes we just, we say, "I'd love to help. I want to participate," and then the moment goes by. And now we're back to work and we forgot that we said that. If you say to a business, "Could you come on Monday at 10 o'clock and speak to my class about sewing?" If I said, "Yes," it'd be on my calendar and I'd be there. So, what we're trying to do is make it so that a business can come in and come and that we are the ones in, in our collaborative effort in the job we're doing now to make that happen.
Well, and you might want to look at too, not just the business owners and stuff, but also the people who possibly work in that are a little more flexible to at least say, "This is, you know, this is what I do. This is what I had to do to get there."
Yes.
You know, because maybe they would be less busy or more willing to do it. I'm not sure.
Good point. You know, if you could get a business to work through those things at a valid point. Any other questions or concerns or, yes, ma'am?
Well, first let me say, I think Lake County does probably a better job than a lot of counties in vocational training and stuff with LPN training and CNA training and the different stuff because you don't see that so much anymore.
You know, we have something very exciting happen and I'm not sure if you know this, you know, but Lake Tech is a recipient of a million dollar grant. They're going to be the, a salaried manufacturing center and they are going to have double the welding stations and they're going to have a CNC programming, virtual programming for students to learn how to make, to use the equipment to make tools. So, they'll be the advanced center for manufacturing at Lake Tech and that will be starting in the fall.
Excellent.
So, it's really good. It's a really good program.
But the other thing I've noticed is that often what the school board does is they sit there and they listen to the staff presentations and they listen to the superintendent make the recommendations and then they're all putting this happy face on. And that's what happened with the Common Core rollout. I mean-